Now, I'll call this meeting to order. Show that all council members are present. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Adams to lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge. Councilman Hatch, if you'd all like to stand and join us, you may do so.
Father in heaven, we humbly come before you this evening. We are grateful that we can meet together as a council and as a community this evening. We're grateful for the area that we get to live, we get to enjoy, and we ask you to please bless it and bless those individuals in our community. Father, we are grateful for the city staff that we've been blessed with and the hard work they do to help our community grow and to look nice. Father, we pray that thou would please watch and go watch over our law enforcement and be with them as they protect us, and we humbly say this things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Adams and Councilman Hatch. Next item on the agenda is called the public, any citizen's desire to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city of council may do so at this time, and I don't have anything, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. Entertained motion for proclamation by the mayor proclaiming April 6th through the 12th, week of young child in the city of Cholo, proclamation by the mayor proclaiming child abuse prevention month, proclamation by the mayor proclaiming April 24th is fair housing month, approval of the final plat in Pine Haven, Unit 2, consideration of a non-commercial ground lease with the WV Powell family trust, and consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting on March 19th. Entertained a motion. Got a motion, I need a second, by Councilman Adams. All those in favor of the motion? All opposed, motion passed unanimously. At this time, I'll have the city clerk read proclamation for child abuse prevention month, please.
Thank you, Mayor Council. During the week of the young child.
Which one?
The week of the young child.
That's the one I meant to say, but, okay.
Whereas all of Arizona's children deserve access to quality early care and education environments, and whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth to age five, and whereas early care and education teachers and childcare providers are the essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school, and whereas funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family well-being, strengthens communities, and grows our state's prosperity, and whereas Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children, First Things First, and other community organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 53rd anniversary of the week of the young child, and whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in the city of Cholo, and whereas public policies that support early care and education for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and the economy thrive. Now therefore, John Leach Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, does hereby proclaim April 6th through the 12th, 2024, as the week of the young child in the city of Cholo, and encourages all citizens to support and invest in early care and education in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, would you like to come up and receive this? She would like a picture of all of us if she goes. Who's your photographer? She can come up too. She can come up too.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us a photo.
You might be squeezing right here sort of kind of.
Come up here by us. Come stand by, yeah, looks. Looks more professional than or something.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Father.
Fine prayer, too.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
I could get bucked out of this chair. Alrighty, next item on the agenda under new business is consideration of acceptance of the Cholo Lake Campground Power Improvement, City of Cholo Project Number FM 592, 5923. This is Himsaw.
Good evening, Mayor Council. At the September 19th meeting, the City Council ordered construction contract for the Cholo Lake Campground Power Improvements to Apache Underground Excavating for Mount Nautique Seat, $87,350. Scope of the work of the project included constructing approximately 600 near feet of new four-inch and six-inch electrical conduit along Cholo Lake Road to serve as a main backbone for future power expansion in the area. The work also included a new 600 amp transformer near the Cholo Lake clubhouse. That clubhouse will receive its own 200 amp service, and the remainder of the park will stay on the existing power service for this phase. The conduit installed will include three pole boxes to allow for future expansion into the campground spots as funding allows. Due to the location of the construction near Cholo Lake, rock excavation was anticipated and was included in the bid. However, during construction, the rock excavation was extremely deep and exceeded expectations. An additional 20 cubic yards of rock excavation was needed to complete the project. The additional cost of the rock is $3,698.88. The project is now complete. Staff recommends accepting the Cholo Lake Campground Power Improvements FM 5923, approving the change order in the amount of $3,698.88, resulting in a total project cost of $91,048.88. Release the retainage and initiate the warranty period. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Motion?
I have a motion. Councilman Judd. I move to accept the construction of Cholo Lake Campground Power Improvements FM-5923. Prove the change order in the amount of $3,698.88, resulting in a total project cost of $91,048.88. Release the retainage and initiate the warranty period.
Got a motion, I need a second. I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion? All opposed, motion passed unanimously. That's not a bad changeover.
Rock.
It's rock. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of receptacle easement agreement with WMH Enterprises LLC and TLS Hospitality. We have it on the agenda that we can take this in an executive session if you want, and I think at this time, I'd like to see, I'd like to go in an executive session to discuss this. We have some more updated information, so. Did you need to say anything before we possibly go in an executive session on this? We could just wait?
No.
I know you're supposed to take this over, but I think in the executive session. Anyway, entertain a motion to go in an executive session?
So moved.
Got a motion, I need a second. Got a second by Councilman Judd. All those in favor? All opposed, motion passed unanimously. At this time, we'll adjourn to the executive session. At this time, we'll adjourn the executive session. Okay, we'll recess back into our regular council session and turn item B over to Anna for a staff summary.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The city is replacing the fence at the meadow along the border with Hampton Inn and Town Place Suites. The fence will be consistent with the fencing along South White Mountain Road. The city further plans to create a connecting path from the sidewalks end to the South White Mountain Road to the meadow walking path. This is in reference to a reciprocal easement with WMH Enterprises and TLS Hospitality. There's a couple of reasons why this reciprocal easement is necessary or is being requested. First is the WMH Enterprises and TLS Hospitality have requested a parking easement adjacent to the restaurant at the Town Place Suites. The parking easement would be a public easement allowing parking for the public to access the Cholo Creek Meadow and the hotel and restaurant guests. And as I started off a little premature there, the intent is to do a sidewalk connection from White Mountain Boulevard, connecting that down to the meadow path, and this would allow parking, public parking access from that side of the meadow as well. The city is interested in this reciprocal easement to gain another access point for the meadow. The city leases out the pasture for horse and cattle grazing. In that, currently, there's only one access point to get the animals moved, and that's at the main parking lot, the meadow's parking lot, which is quite busy, especially during the summer, and this would give us another access point to move or the pasture lease people, another access point for them to be able to move animals in and out of there, minimizing disruption over at the other parking area. And third, there is a minor encroachment on the meadow path on the property over by the Hampton Inn, and this would allow an easement to allow the city to have access to that and be able to maintain that path for public use moving forward. So there's the, it's a reciprocal easement, and that they, it would be receiving the parking easement, but then the city would also be receiving easements and access to the property as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? What I like about the idea is the public parking access to that end of the meadows. It's really nice that you can park down there and go walk the meadow or go eat and walk the meadow, so there is no parking on that end, so it gives us access to park at that far end, so. Questions? Councilman Adams?
I make a motion.
Oh, Council.
Rachel, I was just gonna say you could pull up that map if you can.
Did you have a question?
I was gonna make a question.
Oh, okay.
I'll second.
The public can see it.
My mouse will work.
So that'll all be public parking down at that end there?
I move to approve the reciprocal easement agreement with WMH Enterprises LLC and TLS Hospitality LLC.
Got a motion, got a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor of the motion? All opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thanks again, staff and Anna, for working real hard and getting that done. Okay, next item on the agenda, summary of current events. I have one. About a month, the first weekend in May is our, I think, 71st anniversary, I believe it's 71 years, we're pretty close to that, and barbecue throwdown. It's on Friday and Saturday, I believe the 4th and 5th, open to the public. Saturday, they're gonna have bands. They do have, I believe it's, trying to think, Traeger's coming here with their big trailer, and they're gonna cook for everybody is what my understanding is. Jay's not here to give us more, but I believe Traeger's coming, they're gonna cook ribs and chicken and all that stuff for the public. There'll be live music all day. Contest is Friday and Saturday, but the big event is Saturday. It's open to the public, it's really a fun event. I think Friday, we're doing, it's tacos, and I think tacos that you gotta cook for the contest, the quesadillas, and then Saturday is kind of the big day where there's ribs that we'll be cooking, and then also, I just practiced today, oh, chicken wings. So, and then two steak contests Saturday, so there'll be a lot of smokers running up there again. It is a SCA contest, Steak Cookout Association, but it's open to the public, but come on out and enjoy some ribs and chicken, and I know God, God loves barbecue, so he's been good to us for years. So anyway, it's the first full weekend in May. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things to remind the public of as well, is we have our annual MLK Day of Service. This is where people volunteer in the city to do some community projects. That's on Saturday, April 27th. We'll meet at 9 o'clock at City Hall, do some work, and then we'll return to City Hall for lunch, and we just appreciate everyone that would come out and help us on those days. If you do come out, try to remember to wear closed-toe shoes and bring gloves and a hat. If you want more information, call, you can call Jay Brimhall at 532-4014. So hopefully, most everybody's seen this in the mail. This is something that came from Navajo County, and so hopefully, everybody gets one of those in the mail. This is a very important card. We hope everybody reads it and kind of tries to understand what we're trying to do here. So Navajo County has, there's an opportunity to receive a lot of funding for, to improve our internet in the area, but we need to know where people are underserved or unserved with internet in the community. What that means is maybe your speed isn't quite up to what it should be, even though they say it is. Sometimes it always isn't what they say, and so we need people to kind of look at their speeds and then go on, there's a QR code there, and you can go on and go through that process, and you can tell them, hey, my speed isn't up to what it should be, or I'm not even served in my area for any internet. If you'll do that, it'll help the Navajo County to get more money to improve our internet here. We know we got a lot of people that complain about the internet. Well, here's your chance to do something to improve it, and so we hope that when you get this card, don't throw it in the trash, but take a look at it and check your internet speeds and see if it does meet the requirements. And if you have any more questions on that, we have more information on our social media site, also on the website, there'll be information on it. This will go on for about a month or so, and I think it closes sometime in May, so again, everybody, don't throw that card away, but help us to improve the internet here in the area. Just a couple other things to wrap up. We do have a couple other public works projects going on. We're finishing up the water line in the city park, and we're working on the Mills Parking Lot over there by Nicholas Park, and just appreciate everybody's patience as while we finish up those projects. Thank you.
Okay, anybody need seconds? Next item on the agenda, schedule of meetings, I believe Thursday, 6 o'clock.
Thursday, 6 o'clock will be our budget town hall and study session. That's where the council will go over all the department budgets, so be prepared, it might take us a little while, but hopefully, we can get through it all in one night.
That is open to the public, correct?
It's open to the public. And then also, we just want to remind you that for the council vacancy, we have received a few applications, I think they're due by this Friday, and so what we'll probably want to do is on the April 16th, we'll have some interviews, maybe starting around 5:30 or 6 that night. That's the night of your regular council meeting, but we'll start with a few interviews, and then you can make your selection at the council meeting that night. So just kind of keep that night open from about 5:30 on, if you would, please. It's on April 16th.
Other business before I adjourn? Seeing none, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.